Hey, McKeel and Jane, can you hear me?
Yes, Chuck, I can hear you.
Great.
Joe, Bayou Sue, and Dave can't make it tonight. Dire.
Jane and McKeel, I do not see Massimo, but I think everyone else is here.
I do not see him here either. He has not joined yet.
Okay.
Want me to give him a quick call? I'll just have to wait a couple of minutes?
Sure, you could give him a quick call and see if he's gonna show up. We'll wait a minute or two.
He is the next in line to be seated as an alternate.
He will be with us momentarily.
Thanks. Yeah, see Massimo? Okay, I have about 7:04 PM, so we may as well get started.
Recording stopped.
Recording stopped or started?
It was just stopped.
Recording in progress.
Great. Okay, we'll call this meeting the Branford Planning and Zoning Commission Order. It's Thursday, May 15, 2025. I've got about 7:04 PM. We'll start by introducing members of the commission and staff. Commission Member Joe Chadwick. Joe, are you here?
Joe Chadwick is present.
Thank you, Joe. Commission Member Fred Russo. Fred, are you here?
Fred is present.
Thank you, Fred. Commission Member Marcy Pelusi. Marcy, are you here?
Marcy's here.
Thank you, Marcy. Commission Member Massimo Legori. Massimo, are you here?
Massimo's here.
Thank you, Massimo. And Commission Member Sharon Hutner. Sharon, are you here?
Sharon Hutner is here.
Thank you, Sharon. Our staff this evening is our Town Planner McKeel Whackers. McKeel, you're here?
I'm here.
Thank you, McKeel. Our zoning enforcement officer Jane Ellis. Jane, you're here? Yep, you're muted, Jane, but I...
Zero right now. Jane is here.
Thank you, Jane. And our clerk recording secretary lurking in the background is Michelle Martin. I am Chuck Anders' chair. I'll ask our secretary to read the notice of public hearing. Fred?
Yes. Legal notice, Town of Branford. The Planning and Zoning Commission of the Town of Branford, Connecticut hereby gives a notice to public hearings to be held on Thursday, May 15, 2025, at 7:00 PM by remote technology to consider the applications listed below. Information regarding how to participate in the public hearings will be provided on the commission's meeting agenda that will be posted on the town's website at least 24 hours prior to the meeting. Application number 25-4.1, special exception for accessory apartment located at 22 Beechwood Road, Shawn Jeffries, applicant and owner. Application 25-4.2, special exception for grading, section 6.8, for a single-family home, 301 Maple Avenue LLC, care of Steve Dasty, applicant and owner. At said hearings, all persons will have the right to be heard. Copies are on file in the Planning and Zoning Commission's office at the Planning and Zoning Department, 1019 Main Street, Branford, Connecticut, 06405. Writ communications may be sent to the above address or to planningandzoning@branfordcht.gov. Branford Planning and Zoning Commission, C. Andre's Chairperson.
Chuck Anders' chair. Thank you, Fred. We'll follow our normal format for public hearings, which is that the applicant will go first with the applicant and/or its consultants making the presentation describing the project. After that, we turn it over to commission members and staff to hear a summary of a staff report and open up for questions and comments from commissions. And after that, we'll get to the public portion where the public can speak and ask questions or give any comments. We'll ask that you identify yourself for the record before speaking. In a moment, I'll ask Jane to go through that process of how to participate. And after the public portion, the applicant is allowed to respond to any of the public comment, and we may have further questions and comments from commission members or staff. We may or may not close the public hearing depending on how it goes. And with that, we'll start with our regular agenda. And before we get into that, Jane, can you just run through the process for participating on this Zoom meeting?
Absolutely. So how you can participate? Only if your computer has a microphone, two-way communication, then during a public hearing, if you wish to speak, press the raise hand in the participant window at the bottom of the screen. If you do not have a microphone, you will need to call in on the phone. To speak, press star nine and raise your hand. The information for how to dial in is on the agenda. During a public hearing, if you do not wish to speak, you may type your comments into the chat feature. We will do our best to monitor this feature. However, we would always prefer you to raise your hand and speak. Those joining us, those of you joining us as a computer with Zoom software should note that typing in your full name to view the meeting only and not speak is not required. A pseudoman may be used instead. Again, if you wish to speak, you will need to give your name according to the Public Act 22-3. All instructions are on the agenda if you require more information, and please always state your name before speaking. Thanks.
Chuck Anders' chair. Thank you, Jane. With that, we'll go through the items that set forth on our agenda. First item of our public hearings. It listed is Kim McCabe and Charles Watts. That's for 38 Howard Avenue, special exception for grading. That's a public hearing that we opened, I believe, back on our April 3 meeting, and it's been continued to our June 19 meeting. And just so we're not proceeding with that this evening, Sharon, did you have some?
I have a question with that. I mean, I did read the letter that was received from the neighbors. So is that a decision that's already been made? Or can we discuss that? Or what's traditionally correct?
That is a decision that has made at the last meeting when it did come up, we continued to June 19. And I know I read the letter too, and it was distributed. This is a letter, I believe, from the neighbors. It is a concerned citizen. It's concerned about the timing of it, and then she did ask that we do not waive the deadline for the application. And the short response is, we have not waived the deadline for the application, that the extension is within the timeframe that has been provided by statute. It was requested by the applicant because a mediation is scheduled. This matter also involves some pending litigation. There's a mediation scheduled for June 11. And so it's scheduled for our June 19 meeting. And the hope is that, maybe it's a false hope, but that perhaps the issues could be, I don't know if they're settled, but perhaps narrowed through that mediation process. And it seemed to be, it seemed that that was the reason for the continuation, is that the that there was this pending mediation, and we still had time to get the public hearing going within the statutory timeframe, and it made sense. But the concerns, I think we hear the concerns. We recognize that. And we're not waiving any deadlines. This is within that. This is frankly the last day. It will be open on that day. It will not be continued after that.
Okay, great.
That's where we are.
Thanks for the explanation.
Sure. Thanks. So with that, then we'll move on to item number two, which is Shawn Jeffrey, applicant and owner, 22 Beechwood Road. This is a special exception for an accessory apartment. Is the applicant ready to proceed with that?
Good evening, commissioners. Jim Preddy, Chris Collo Engineering here at 420 East Main Street in Branford, representing Jeffries at 22 Beechwood. This accessory structure was approved by you folks back in June, I believe, after receiving variance in Health Department approval. We received a special exception from planning and zoning for a structure higher than 15 feet. And since that time, they have discovered that they actually have a need for a family member to possibly move into an ADU at their house. So we're really looking just for, I guess, a use approval. Nothing physically is changing. The building's not moving. We did actually go back to the Health Department and get approval to connect now the barn to the septic. And that also included state health approval for central system because you have two different buildings coming to one system. I did receive the staff report from John Guskowski. And it looks like he believes that we meet all the special exception criteria, with just a couple of standard recommendations at the end. I think this is a pretty simple application.
Chuck Anders' chair. Thank you, Mr. Preddy. I know that Mr. Guskowski prepared the report, but I believe he's not with us this evening. And McKeel, that you're prepared to summarize that for us?
That's correct. So McKeel Whackers, Town Planner. So John Guskowski sent out a staff report and an amended staff report as well, recommending that we support the special exception. It meets the special exception criteria. There are three conditions that we seek to attach to this approval. The first is to reduce the glare and any proposed light fixtures shall be demonstrated by meeting the IES full cutoff definitions, and the language is there in the staff report. The second item is that the owner of the accessory dwelling property must submit an affidavit to the commission that the one dwelling unit on the property shall be occupied by the property owner. And then item three, prior to issuance of a certificate of zoning compliance. The accessory property, accessory apartment must file a deed restriction on the land records requiring a unit if it's to be rented below prices that would, in order to qualify as an affordable housing unit, as defined by Connecticut General Statute Section 8-30G. Happy to answer any questions based on those comments.
Chuck Anders' chair. Thank you, Mr. Whackers. Questions, comments from commission members before we open up the public? Hearing none, let's go ahead and open up the public. Does any member of the public wish to comment? Remember Jane's instructions about raising your hand. Jane, do you see anyone? Looks like we got...
I don't see anybody.
I did see, who do you got there?
This is Shawn Jeffrey. We're the owners.
Looks like the applicants.
Let me lower my hand here. We just want to thank you for supporting this ADU application.
Right. My name is Teresa, and so my parents live in Ohio, and my dad's not doing well. He has dementia. And we're not sure. He's qualified for hospice. And recently, when I visited them, my mom indicated when he passes, she'd like to come move with us. So that's really the pivot of why we're looking for the ADU.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffrey and Teresa. Are there any other members of the public which to comment? Jane, you see anybody?
We do not, but we have one person that wrote in from 27 Beechwood, Steve Margolis, and he says, I approve this project.
Chuck Anders' chair. Thank you, Jane. So you don't see anyone else? Jane, I don't see anyone.
I do not see anybody else.
Okay, then we can close the public portion. Any further comments by the applicant, Mr. Preddy?
No, I think we're all set. This is pretty simple. We've done a number of these, the standard conditions for every one of them, really. So yeah, I think we're okay.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Preddy. Any further questions by commission members or staff? Hearing done, then we'll close this matter as a public hearing, and this is something I think we can take up in a little bit. Thank you, Ms. Preddy. Thank you, applicants. Next item is item number three on our public hearings, which is 301 Maple Ave LLC, care of Steve Disti, applicant and owner. This is a special exception for grading. Is the applicant ready to proceed with this one?
Yeah. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jim Gallagher. I'm from Naperson Young Engineers. We're from, we are located at 1355 Middletown Avenue in Norfolk, representing Steve Dasty in this application. Mr. Dasty bought the house at Trio One Maple. It had been abandoned for several years. He cleared a lot of the brush and so on in the back of the yard. He also cut cut down several trees that had fallen in the yard. He has since brought in topsoil and seed to try and establish a lawn in the front and a lawn in the back. This application was reviewed and approved by the inland wetland agency for the town of Branford. And so we're here in front of you tonight because of the, under the guise of grading, there really was no change in elevation on any of the property. Mr. Dasty brought in about, well, a mason dump size load of topsoil to reestablish lawn in the front and reestablish lawn in the back. In accordance with the inland wetlands approval, there are several plantings that need to be installed along a fence line that is going to be constructed along the top of the bank that's in the back of the parcel. And so that's, so we're there, we're here in front of you seeking your approval for a special use, special exception for, I guess it's called grading, but like I said, there is really no change in grading to the address.
Chuck Anders' chair. Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. McKeel, do you want to summarize Mr. Guskowski's staff report on this one?
Fairly. So just to be brief, this is a retro act of approval for clearing and grading. It's primarily the restoration and clearing of the formerly abandoned and derelict property, so it was a net benefit. So the findings were that, subject to compliance and the conditions, there are three of them. The commission finds that the testimony and the use is consistent with the special exception criteria. And the approval applies to all the alterations proposed in the site plan that was admitted. The conditions are that, one, all conditions of any previous approval shall remain in force and effect as they still, as they may still apply. Two, erosion control measures shall be installed and maintained throughout the construction to the satisfaction of the ZEO, Town Planner, his designee. And three, the applicant shall provide a written narrative of the erosion and sedimentation control measures, including installation and maintenance details. You recommend approval. Do you consider it?
Chuck Anders' chair. Thank you, Mr. Whackers. Any questions, comments from commission members before we open up the public? Sharon?
No, this is Sharon Hutner. I just don't understand why this didn't come to the planning and zoning first. Was it because the wetlands commission approved it? I guess I'm just not understanding the process.
Okay, Jim Gallagher from Naperson Young. There is a small water course in the back of the parcel, so the procedure, I guess, that we followed was go to wetlands first, secure wetlands approval, and then come before this commission to secure this commission's approval.
That was the advice that you got from the town?
That's correct.
Okay.
Sure. And Chuck Anders' chair, and I assume, Mr. Gallagher, this is an after-the-fact approval, so the work's already been done, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. The silt fence and so on is all up. The only thing left to be done is to install the plantings that were required by the inland wetlands agency.
And my assumption, Chuck Anders' chair again, is that this was inadvertent, that it just slipped, that you didn't realize that you needed to get the permit in advance? Is that...
Yeah, Mr. Dasty came in, and you know, his perception was that, you know, it's just some brush in the back, and I can cut that down. And there were, there were a couple of trees that actually, one of them was resting on the house itself, so the fact that it was, the property was in a bit of disarray, you know, he perceived it as, you know, cleaning up the property and just didn't realize that there's a procedure for that type of activity.
Thank you, Chuck Anders' chair. Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Any other questions, comments, Marcy?
Yeah, I just need a little refresher. Mason dump is five yards of material about, or what do you say to track?
Jim Gallagher from Naperson Young. Mason dump is a six yard.
Okay, so, and I'm trying to remember the regulation, but I thought that you didn't have to come, well, if 200, I don't know if it was cubic yards or square feet of disturbance to the grading, isn't that the threshold for requiring our review?
Well, I think part of the reason why we're here is because of the activity prior to ours to the town.
The activity, I'm sorry, prior, I mean, I know you have to get the wetland approval, but I'm just saying, I thought the thing that triggered planning and zoning was there's a statement about grading review for 200 cubic yards, and I'm not sure that a mason dump meets that, so I'm just trying to understand why you're here, I guess, is my question.
We've been directed to. That's as best as I can respond.
But do we have a, do we know what the reg says exactly? Could somebody like just educate me on the regulation?
So the trigger is any activity within 100 feet of inland wetland and water. It's not the amount, it's the distance.
But there is a, if there were no wetlands, there is an amount trigger, right?
Correct.
And is that 200 cubic yards? Did I remember that correctly?
It differs based on the size of the property.
Okay. Well, maybe you can update me on that, you know, outside of the meeting. That would be appreciated, just so I can understand. Thank you.
Chuck Anders' chair. Thank you, Marcy. Any other questions, comments from commission members or staff before we open up the public? Hearing none, then. Any member of the public wish to comment? Jane, you see anyone?
Not seeing anybody? No? Anybody?
So I can't figure out how to put up my hand here. My name is...
Please state your name.
My name is Bill Chapin, and I am on the Board of Directors of the Branford Land Trust. So I guess our concern is how would this impact the wetland that we own, which is across the street? And since the work is already done, I guess we know or its impact has already been felt, but that was our concern and why I'm attending tonight. Both in terms of water runoff, sediment, and other pollution that might come along with any disturbance of the property adjacent to the stream across the street from our wetland.
Chuck Anders' chair. Thank you, Mr. Chapin. Mr. Gallagher, you care to address that?
Yeah, sure. Well, the Wetlands Commission went to great lengths to make sure that we we put a vegetative strip at the top of the bank adjacent to the water course to try and prevent any type of long-term impact to the wetlands related to fertilizers and pesticides. Certainly establishing the lawn in the front and in the back will help stabilize the property and stabilize the turf in the area. And lastly, there'll be no increase in runoff caused by the application because there is no increase in impervious surface.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Gallagher, Mr. Chapin. Are there other members of the public which to comment? See anyone, Jane?
Seeing anybody? No.
Okay. Then I think we can close the public portion for this public hearing. Are there any further comments by the applicant, Mr. Gallagher?
No, I think we've covered it. Yeah, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments from commission members or staff? Sharon?
It's Sharon Hunter again. I'm just concerned if there's going to be a lawn established, what kind of fertilizer and pesticides are going to be used on that lawn if it, in fact, is adjacent to the wetland? So I know, you know, that there are organic fertilizers out there that can be used, but I don't know what the applicant is, how the applicant feels about it.
Well, I think that if you look at all the properties in the town of Branford, there are hundreds, if not thousands, of properties adjacent to wetlands where they're, you know, normal, call them Home Depot or Lowe's type of fertilizers and pesticides are applied. I don't think that this applicant will apply anything any different than the rest of the members in the community. Especially the property in the rear is well shaded, so fertilizers will probably be less often used because, you know, the grass will grow rather naturally. And the property in the front is a significant amount of distance away from the water course. And uh the property in the front is a is a significant amount of distance away from the uh from the water course.
Uh, Sharon Hutner again. I understand that Home Depot and the residents of Branford use various different kinds of uh fertilizers and pesticides, but that doesn't make it healthy for our environment, so I would encourage all of the residents in Branford to reconsider the kinds of um fertilizers and pesticides that they use for the health of our wildlife and for our residents and for our wetlands. Thank you.
Uh, Chuck Anderson, thank you, Sharon. Any further questions, comments from commission members or staff or the applicant? Hearing none, then we will close this matter as a public hearing, and again, this is something we can probably address in a little bit. Thank you, Mr. Galligan.
Thank you very much.
With that, I think that completes the public hearing items that we have on our agenda for this evening, so let's go back to item number two. First one, that's twenty-two Beechwood Road. That was the special exception and accessory apartment. McKeel, I'm wondering if you can uh can you put the uh the proposed finding and conditions on the screen?
Certainly. Do you see them?
Uh, yes, yes, yeah, we we can see them, yeah, the proposed findings, uh yeah, we we can see the first page, the bottom of the first page, and then um right, so so you want to um, I I know you reviewed in the public hearing, and it's being displayed to us now, just stating that for the record. The findings state, I'll just read the finding, "Subject to compliance with the conditions listed below, the commission finds, based on the testimony and application materials presented, that the proposed use of the property is consistent with the special exception criteria per section nine point eight of the zoning regulations." And I think indicated the conditions are the standard conditions. Number one is the glare lighting condition, I won't read it, but it's in our staff report that has been mailed to us and that we have. Number two is the affidavit that the owner will live in uh one of the dwellings uh on the property, and number three is the affordable housing deed restriction as well. So and and again, we have that language displayed in front of us and we have it, it's been sent to us, so. Does any que, does anyone have any questions and comments from from commission members? I think uh um who's um, I know Joe Joe Vayusto is out, and McKeel, did you say who was up? Was it uh? Is it uh is it Massimo?
Massimo is, Massimo is uh scheduled to be the um seated alternate.
David Dwyer is missing.
Okay. Um, yeah, okay, so Massimo, you'd be voting on this? Okay, so um, okay, so then does someone want to make a motion to approve the application by a draft, by uh adopting the findings and conditions in the staff report that was just uh displayed to us?
Fred Russo will make that motion.
Okay, we'll give the motion to Fred and the second to Joe Chadwick. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Fred Russo?
Fred Russo is in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
Massimo?
Massimo's in favor.
And uh the chair is also in favor, so that application is approved? Uh uh and good luck, good luck with the parents, that's uh I hope I hope they can move in. Uh, that's, I hope that goes well. So let's turn then to item, the next one, which is three oh one Maple Avenue, that's the one we just heard, the six point eight grading application. And McKeel, is that something you can pull up on the um as well, the proposed finding and conditions? On that one? Um, and again, I think it looks like uh Massimo, you're on this one, so it's the regular members. Um, and uh it's Joe Chadwick, Fred, Marcy, Massimo, and myself. So it looks like, again, the pretty standard uh conditions, this is an after the fact application. Is there any discussion before we move the vote? I I know there were a couple of questions raised from land trust and so forth. Um, it looks like Wetlands has approved this. Um, and there were some sound like conditions for the wetlands that were being safeguarded. Um, I understand there's general use of fertilizer, that's could always be a concern, but um that's that's kind of a bigger issue, I think. Any other thoughts from anyone before we move forward with this? Marcy?
Yeah, so I mean, I think our purview, you know, the wetlands took care of the issues that, I mean, I don't disagree with Sharon, but I think those are issues that are really handled by wetlands and they're addressing it with the um the shrub layers to probably help filter any any treatments that they may use on the lawn. Um, you know, I I realize that we, you know, I do agree that we need to try to take care of our wetland systems, but, you know, I think our purview is a little bit more with the the grading is what triggers it, and I trust that the wetlands were you know, making those considerations. I think, you know, there's a movement in general that is, you know, putting more products on the shelf that are more environmentally sensitive, and hopefully these owners would choose to use them, but I'm not sure that we can dictate that in a application uh legally, is I guess really what I'm asking, Chuck. I mean, we can't legally dictate that they use, that they not use pesticides on their lawn, can we?
Chuck Anderson, I I I've I've seen more complex applications where there's very sensitive wetlands, where there are, you know, particular um fertilizing plans, there are, you know, plans that have to be submitted that are part of that, but I I wouldn't put this in that category. Um, I I sort of agree that the buffers and the other in the wetlands approval, I I mean, we we don't I don't think we need to duplicate wetlands job. It, I I do agree with what you said, Marcy, that this is mainly a grading issue, that's the main reason it comes before us, and and maybe the proximity to wetlands is another reason, otherwise we probably wouldn't even be hearing this, but but it that that's what's triggering this. Um, but um if if the concerns are the wetlands, the impact of wetlands, I'm I'm confident relying on on the measures taken by the Wetlands Commission.
Okay, that's was my perception as well.
Right. Any other uh commission members or staff have any comments before we move on this one? Not then, does someone want to make a motion that we approve this application by adopting the two findings and the three conditions in the uh staff report, and again, they're presently, I think McKeel has presented in front of us, and they're in the reports that have been mailed to us.
I'll make that motion.
Motion to approve made by Marcy, is there a second?
Chadwick seconds.
Second by Joe Chadwick. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Fred Russo?
Fred Russo is in favor.
Marcy Palusi?
Marcy's in favor.
Massimo?
Massimo's in favor.
And the chair is also in favor, so that application is approved. That brings us then to old business. We have a number of items in old business coming up. Um, and again, we have four items that are on our scheduled for uh public hearings, I believe. At our next meeting, items number one and two are on one site at six forty-two Main Street, uh an IHOD amendment and a special exception, and three and four, one is a coastal site plan for an in-ground swimming pool at twenty-eight Seventh Avenue, and four is uh special exception, another six point eight application at one oh one Hotchkiss Grove Road. So again, we have a public hearing scheduled for that on um at our next meeting, so we will consider that and hear the evidence on those at the next meeting. So that brings us down to new business. These are just items that have just uh recently come in, I believe, and uh it looks like uh items number uh one, actually, it looks like two, three, four, and five are all the same application relates to a three lot subdivision. So that'll be coming up, and the first one relates to a special exception for automotive tinting. Again, we'll need to schedule public hearing for that. Um, I don't, I I mean, the way we we've done it, McKeel, is it's left to the discretion of staff in consultation with the chair. I think you mentioned that uh you think the June nineteenth is when we'll probably schedule these?
That's correct.
Okay, so we'll likely hear those those items on our June nineteenth meeting. It brings us then to minutes then from our May first meeting. I think those were sent out to us and also circulated by Michelle. And I don't know if anyone, any corrections or comments, and if not, does someone want to make a motion with respect to those minutes?
Fred Russo will make that motion.
Fred Russo makes a motion to approve the minutes of our May first meeting. Is there a second?
Marcy will second.
Second by Marcy. Any further discussion? Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Fred Russo?
Fred Russo is in favor.
Marcy Palusi?
Marcy's in favor.
Massimo?
Massimo's in favor.
And chair is also in favor, so those minutes are approved. That brings us then to correspondence. Any correspondence, McKeel?
Uh, yes, there was one letter regarding um uh deposit of dredging uh by Army Corps of Engineers site just off the coast of East Haven. Uh, it's just a notification letter that was required to be sent out, and it's available if staff want to see it or commission wants to see it.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, McKeel. So let's move on then to other business. We have planners report. McKeel, what do you got for us?
Yeah, thank you. So um after last month or last two weeks ago with the questionnaire, um that was sort of the last piece I was putting together into a report, looking at the zoning code. Um, and putting together sort of a a framework for exploring um possible planning uh aspects for the commission and for staff moving forward. Um, the report, which I had mailed out by email on Monday, uh you have all had it, I'm not going to do a big presentation on it, because I think it's still premature to do a presentation, I'm going to do sort of some high levels summaries and sort of my thinking around this and what um I sort of still need from the commission before we do any deep dive into to what's in that report. Um, there's a lot in there, a lot of that is is more to has to do with me getting up to speed on where Branford is in terms of um its regs, its applications, um processes, uh and how those can continue to serve Branford um in in a meaningful way. Um, from that, I'm going to just start share my screen, so I can go over the assessment, which is section six. Uh, and I'm going to really quickly so after really digesting a lot of that, and you know, it was a pretty short timeframe, so I don't want to say this is a an authoritative report in that it's hundred percent um and, you know, thoroughly done, it it was really a quick review of what is available, and then a quick consultation with stakeholders in the commission. And from that, uh here's sort of the sense of where I am getting. And the opportunity tonight is really to sort of continue a little bit of that discussion to verify, is this heading in the right direction? And then sort of get a sense of um as I go forward, what makes sense for the commission to take on as sort of its workload, um especially looking really into the fall. Uh, so the assessment, um I think there's sort of this opportunities right now to to get a balance of what um is necessary complexity for the regulations so that adequately addresses the the challenges that that Branford is facing. Um, but also trying to uh construct them in a way that's user-friendly from processes, systems, so using technology, uh but also just clarifying what we mean by in the regulations, so um making sure that our intent i- is actually clear so we can carry it out and and not get um caught up in some of the some things that I think some people find uh puzzling. And I'll get into one of those. Uh, the regulations, as I said, need to be clear and enforceable. It it really is a challenge when staff are, you know, if if it's too much gray area within the regulations, it it's hard to make sure that it is compliant. Staff has latitude to sort of ensure compliance. Um, but whether it's vague, i- it really becomes a challenge. And then can we sort of use that that a clear process to develop a predictable development process? Um, sort of the short-term things that I'm really handling at a staff level that I think are will be impactful and and setting a stage for this is one, really getting a a current zoning regulation um available to the public. Over the past five years, there's been a number of zoning amendments adopted by the commission, which are not currently available um in a zoning regulation document for the public, and here's a list of those amendments that have been adopted. Uh, I'm using John Kuskowski, um while I still have him through the end of June, he's going through and and uh and and putting these amendments into a new document so that we can then get a revised zoning regulation document available to the public and the commission in short order. Uh, he's probably going to have the draft done by next week. And then shortly after reviewing and making sure it's it's accurate, we'll go have it go out to printing, get copies to the commission, and also put digital copies up on the town's website. Um, so that everyone can use these regulations that have really been around for a while, just not not publicly available um and yet. Uh, the second is um the town procured a system called OpenGov for permitting, uh and it's sort of working with uh the building department, engineering, uh inland wetlands, as well as planning and zoning. Uh, we're working to getting that uh where we can get it to be launched as a soft launch. I'm shooting for June first so that we can have digital permits um uh that can be available to the public. Um, and that soft launch is really with the understanding that uh there'll still be refinement that will need to be done in that, uh and with a target of August first, that that system be really running and operating in in what in a manner that we we find useful for for the department. And I'm happy to sort of present that uh as time goes on. Um, the other thing is we're formalizing the early plan review. Um, early plan review was sort of a process that happened after submission. Um, and the other departments find to be very useful, and I want to see it to be more consistent. Um, building, engineering, and the wetlands, water and sewer, and health have all commented to that fact. Um, we're looking to actually place this before formal submission to make this really a voluntary early plan review process. Um, that can really head off a lot of issues, reduce the amount of conditions that need to be applied on on applications for items that really should just be incorporated as part of the application. Uh, so that we can just really focus on conditions on on what is really necessary to to make the the project not just compliant, but also an improvement over what what is expected. Um, the fourth item is really delegation of of minor site plan reviews. There's been a couple of sort of ad hoc processes that have been developed. One is under for modifications to site plans and modifications to site special exceptions. Um, they're listed as in the regulations in the zoning code, but um in the report, you'll see that I I basically did a typology of what those modifications um consisted of. And I think that's a real good framework with which to have a conversation with the commission about these types of modifications. Um, do would they also lend themselves to be sort of a minor level site plan review or a zoning staff level site uh planning review? And there's opportunities there that to prevent things from coming to the commission as a site plan um or as a special exception. Um, and but that is really a sort of a conversation that we need to have um in knowing what that that looks like. Um, and then the fifth is really the big one, and I think everyone is sort of familiar with, six point eight. Uh, it comprises almost a third of your business that comes before the commission. Um, and it looks to be a combination of awkward wording um in the regulation and maybe even overlap of jurisdiction, especially within wetlands. Um, while I loathe to take out regulation wording, um because there probably was an intent to to address something in the past, I think there is a need to add some phrasing into that section um that that trips up everyone uh that really recognizes that there's activities under um coastal area management uh district regulation in five one, and there's exclusions and exemptions in inland wetlands um that are really just ignored by the by the six point eight regulation. Um, that might have a benefit to aligning the intent um with all three regulations, um and with grading, coastal uh area management and inland wetlands. Um, and and might reduce the amount of special exceptions you see under this regulation. Uh but the really the the area that that really trips us up up is this this distance, as you probably know, with Harry, you you tried to reduce this distance um take place with one hundred feet. And then you're trying to reduce it down to twenty five for one and fifty for the other. Um I know how hard it is to get a hundred feet is sort of the model language at the state. Here's two. So trying to get them to sign off on something less than the model language is probably a nonstarter. But I think they will completely recognize that the model language references or allows for exclusions and exemptions, and we already have those codified in our regulations. So let's sort of point to that instead. And then um so those are the five items I'm going to be working on over the um June to September. Uh most of these are done at a staff level. There's not much uh that needs to be done by the commission. Um but this sort of having a conversation about minor site plan reviews and then a conversation about six point eight, whether or not that's something you want to tackle. Uh I would like to have that but in a more formal environment where we just dedicate specific time to these two items uh on a future agenda. Um the more significant items that I'm sort of pointing to to in the in the document is really about, you know, uh whether or not there's appetite to revisit some other items in the regulations, like what what constitutes a complete application that comes before the submission? Um what is uh the standards or conditions that that site plans and subdivisions are are need to adhere to? A lot of these are, we're putting conditions of stuff that is already in the regulations. Um but for some reason hasn't been uh included in the applicant's submission. Uh my hope is early plan review and and formalizing that will address that significantly. But more, I don't know if we need to always reiterate what our regulations state um uh and require um conditions to that fact. Um the next is, you know, the level of uses. You know, what's a site plan review? What's a special exception review? Um should we have some thresholds to sort of uh figure out is there a uh a le- uh is there a significant and a minor level of these that be uses where something significant such as a uh building over s- uh five thousand square feet or an impact of over five thousand square feet on on a lot? Um would come to the commission and something below that? Uh would that make sense to have it as a staff level? Um chapter six, uh Harry had issued an RFP to hire a consultant to really go through chapter six, which is our basic standards in the zoning regulations. Um that means like anything that deals with parking, signage, lighting, uh grading um and other sort of basic standards landscaping that we want to establish or or all contained in that chapter and applied to every single sort of permit, site plan and special exception. Um yeah. How much do we want to move forward on on really tackling that chapter? Uh and then five is really, you know, uh the planet conservation develop development really recommended relooking at a number of districts. Um these are the ones I pulled out from the P O C D. So they said, we're looking at the town center. Um it I think they said it was fairly complex. Um there's there's many different zones within the in the town center. You have the B C zone, the B R zone, uh the R one zone. And then you have overlay zones as well, the town village district and the main street overlay district. And then throw in that you have the potential for P P D Ds and um uh age restricted has affordable how development housing uh and uh that also come into play. And does that lead to the type of predictable development that you you anticipate or or whatnot? Um there are different approaches that might be worth looking into, um such as form based code strategies, but that would require a significant, I think, educational process, a significant charrette process to understand what type of form codes would need to be developed. Um and that would be a a lengthy endeavor. Um wh- whether or not the commission has the appetite to do that. And then again, even through the end of the year, if we were just if we were to start looking at this, so at this point, it would just be exploratory. We wouldn't be ready for regulations this year. Um that would have really, I would push that off until two thousand twenty six. Um uh and then obviously in two thousand twenty six, we need to start working towards a two thousand twenty seven affordable housing plan. So the purpose of this list is really to sort of say the scope of things that we could do. Um and I my my hope here is really to have a conversation about one, what's feasible, two, what you find to be as a priority. Um and then um really, I would take that information and and sort of refine this uh as some sort of action plan. Um and you can also tell me that we we um maybe not ready uh to to undertake much of this. Um and we'll just focus on one of these items now and then we can tackle the next one later. Uh I have no blueprint yet. I'm still trying to figure out what it looks like, and and this is part of that conversation to help me. So I'll, if there's any comments, I appreciate it now, but I'm also open to any emails or communications or one on ones uh outside of the commission meeting.
Chuck Anderson, thanks, McKeel. McKeel, do you do you do you want to have a, I mean, we I I sort of glanced through it and I know it's a draft and all the disclaimers that you you mentioned, but do you do you want to schedule another time, you know, an hour or two to where we can go over some of this in detail or or what?
Yeah.
Suggestions or?
Well, yeah, certainly this suggestion is that a normal commission meeting is probably not the best format to to jive into something like this. I wanted to be respectful for your time, but also to give you guys the space to really focus on something like this because it is fairly broad. Um and a a special meeting probably makes sense and um a special meeting, whether or not in person uh or remote, um I'll defer to the commission's sort of uh desire. Um I think a special meeting, if we looked at maybe um I know the summer's coming on quick, uh but you know, something in July, if that's not too, I don't want to jump in, or June is also a possibility.
Okay, why don't we uh throw that out? I know I know summer's, you know, and and we we take August off uh in theory. Um but uh what what do people think of that? I don't know if people have had a chance to even take a look and overview. It's a pretty, it's like fifty pages and there's some pretty interesting stuff in there. And and it's frankly, if I were just walking into a town, you know, the I I I would do what McKeel did. And and sometimes we're blind because we've just been sitting here and we assume things. And it what when I read it, it's, I thought, oh, yeah, okay. You you don't need to see it anymore. You just assume this is what we're dealing with. And so there's some, it was a chance to step back a bit. So but I I there was that was a lot of big picture stuff. I think the smaller stuff that you were mentioning, McKeel, is probably the the way you start. We don't want to be too ambitious. But I guess the 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 immediate question is, do do we have the desire or uh ability to have a special meeting in June or July to where we can spend an hour or two kind of going over some of what McKeel is talking about? So I'm going to ask everyone, Joe Chadwick, you know, I'm going to, because your name's at the top of the list, Joe. So you always go first.
I I'll I'll always take the hit for you, Chuck.
Thanks.
Yeah, I'm I'm perfectly willing. I'm actually quite anxious to to dive into this. There's there's a lot of very interesting concepts in there. Um I have never been bashful about um expressing my desire to strunk and white all over the place on this uh current zoning code. But um yeah, I I would just probably be cautious about calling this an audit um in that an audit is something that is measured against, measurement against standards. And it's really a survey more than it is an audit because I I don't want to give this um turn turn this into something, turn this into something that someone could use as a political football later. So um I have heard people use the term audit in in very strange ways um in other situations in town. You know, I would just be cautious about that that piece of language, but um yeah, I'm I'm happy to dive into it and really happy to see form based zoning even just show up as a as a as an aside of a mention.
Thanks. And Joe, you'd be good for a special meeting sometime in June or July?
Yeah. Absolutely. Just just as long as it's not in the middle of the day.
Right, right. Fred?
Um I I'm I'm available. You know, you if you can hold a special meeting, uh I will definitely be there.
Okay, great. Uh Marci? Uh yeah, you're muted, Mark Mars.
Can you hear me now? It's Marci?
Yes.
Um I just want to commend Michelle on everything he's been doing so far. Um you know, I'm hearing how responsive he is to things and I really appreciate the overview, you know, taking, you know, step back and really trying to get your arms around what we are and what we aren't. And a lot of times I think, you know, we need to do it ourselves, you know, the I often feel that a lot of what we do on the commission is a sort of piecemeal application of our regs against a application. And I I really value the town as a whole and some of the questions like Sharon mentioned earlier. You know, how are those appropriately integrated or not into the regulations? You know, things with C level rise, things with you know, T O Ds. But um I would love to kind of get a a list of what you presented so that I can write my own notes and um be prepared and read up a little bit more on form based zoning. I, you know, I I've heard the lang- I've heard of what it is, but I'm I'm not confident I know enough about it to, but I'm very curious about it all the same. So, you know, I can meet whenever, anytime.
Great. Thanks, Marci. Massimo?
Yeah, sure. I mean, how could I say no, right? Everybody's putting in such such uh valiant effort here that um, you know, I'm I'm definitely in, absolutely.
Great, thanks. Sharon?
Yes, um I I also appreciate all of the work that McKeel has done so far in the short time that he's here and really um has put together this document that kind of summarizes so much of what is going on for the Planning and Zoning Commission that I am anxious to get in there and and have a meeting and discuss some of these things, which um I found really interesting. So I'm free June and July, except the um week of July eleventh. And um also, I was very happy to see that the P O C D played a really big role in some of um McKeel's comments because I think that we should really take a look at that document and um and use that to aid us in some of the direction that we take for Branford. And the other issue that concerns me is enforcement. Because we could have the best regulations in the world, but if we don't have a suitable way to enforce them, then I think we'll just be spinning our wheels. So I would love to get McKeel's take on how how he would see that as uh what the best um enforcement team would look like um to eliminate some of the issues that we've had in the past where applicants have gone ahead and um done various things to their property and then have come to the commission and asked for forgiveness. So I would like to see if we can eliminate some of that. Thank you.
Thanks, Sharon. And I if we do enforcement, obviously Jane would be involved too.
Could I jump in on that note?
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, enforcement is kind of after the fact. I think that leads to what happens before the fact, which is really educating the public about and simplifying the regs so that they know when they need to come and when they don't and what constitutes, you know, just I I don't know how the best way to do that, but um maybe it's updating the webpage, making it more user friendly. But, you know, I I think it just comes down, we're getting more and more new residents into town. Um and there's sort of an old guard, new guard, you know, politics sometimes that happens. And, you know, I love that, I don't mind calling it an audit, but like there's so much with A I. For example, I'm curious how are, you know, oftentimes when we're trying to make a a change to the regulations, we're comparing ourselves to other towns that we think fit or don't fit. But, you know, I'd like to think for ourselves and then sort of see how how it compares and, you know, see if A I is gonna, you know, simplify it in ways that we might not anticipate. I don't know. But um, you know, there's just lots of new ways to brand ourselves and present our regulations that I think would be fun to explore. Which is why I'm I'm curious about the form based form based zoning idea in particular. I think we've done the P O C D quite a bit. You know, whether that's getting translated effectively. I know we've we've reviewed that, you know, since I've been on the the commission and, you know, it's, you know, it's that theory that how do you take theory to get it into application?
Thanks, Marci. So it sounds like a consensus, yes, let's try to get a special meeting in June or July. I know schedules are all all over the place. I know I'm going to Italy for like ten days at the end of June and beginning of July with my son. So, you know, I I think we're just going to have to, I don't know, send a calendar out, see, you know, start from staff, Michelle and McKeel, maybe you can and Jane figure out something where we can get something. The next question would be uh in person or online? I mean, frankly, I wouldn't mind an in person. Uh we may be able to actually see people, you know, for just a a once off. So we're not creating any precedent, but uh I don't, what what do people think about that?
Does it need to be a public official meeting or is this a work session amongst the commission?
It's a meeting. Anytime we meet, it's a meeting. It freedom has to be advertised, but whatever. I mean, no one show up. I mean, but it but it would be a work session where we wouldn't take any votes. Yeah, but but it have to be open to the public. We have to find a location to do it and uh
And and advertise it and and televise it?
Yeah, we have to schedule it just like any meeting. We don't have to, we don't have to put it in the newspaper, but we have to file in the town clerk's office, just like any town meeting meets, you know, just. I mean, we do that whether it's online or, I mean, or in person.
Well, I was just curious if it was going to be filmed for like B C T V, that kind of a meeting or you know, sometimes we have work groups where it's the community in and it's only two of us from the commission and, you know.
Right. Yeah, I I know. That's interesting. Yeah, maybe we don't have to have it video. I don't know. Yeah.
Now, the recording is largely because of public hearings. Uh and if we're not taking, if this is really just a meeting and not a a business meeting, um I don't think we have to televise it, but I can double check.
No, we have had uh 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 transportation oriented district meetings and meetings for uh P O C D that were announced but never recorded. So just so long as they're published, I think, that's unless unless there's been a change in the regulation, but um a lot of those, the Affordable Housing Commission Committees, um those were advertised but never never reported.
Yeah, I don't think we have to video. There's no requirement. But what what are what are your thoughts about in person versus online?
I I think in per- person is preferable so that we can get a little bit more face to face kind of discussion and you know, I mean, that's why I was sort of suggesting a more work oriented workshop oriented type of meeting as opposed to more formal meeting where we're, you know, we don't know what our conclusions we're going to make and some of the way that, you know, we're leaning on the commission, you know, we tend to all kind of come together in the end, but you know, there could be certain topics that, you know, I'd want to feel free to, you know, get passionate about certain things and not have to wash my eyes.
Okay, so so in person workshop type of thing. Uh what 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 others have thoughts?
Um I agree. Sharon Hutner, I think in person would work for this kind of meeting.
Okay.
I agree also. Massimo.
Good.
Could I bring something? Could I bring something up real quick um while we're on the subject, just real up? So I'm, you know, I'm seeing, you know, we're proving a lot of um apartment buildings and and it seems like, you know, McKeel brought up that we have to uh go over some more, you know, future affordable housing. Um so it seems like we're gonna be probably, well, if you have the land, then you could build more apartment buildings and it fits our rules and regs. We're probably going to approve them. Um and and then we talked about like enforcement, like and and you brought up Jane, Chuck. Um you know, is there anything? And and I've run into this for the first time in my life. You know, is there anything, and, and I've run into this for the first time in my life, is there anything? That this commission can do or suggest to the town of Branford? To have certain rules and regulations for the future of the tenants that live in Branford by the landlords, right? So it seems like, um, so I'm a tenant, you know, and I ran into a situation personally that um. It, it, it's just a completely horrible uh, situation and there's nowhere for me to really turn to. You know, I've turned to, um, you know, the police. And they're like, you gotta go, it's a civil matter. I turned to the health department and they did what they can. But it also ends up turning into a civil matter and then it got suggested, well, we do have a New Haven um, county. Um, um, that we could turn to. I've reached out to the New Haven County uh, Housing Authority and, and there's nothing there. Um, that will help the re, the residents and tenants of the town of Branford. There's really nowhere you can turn to, so. The more affordable, now, I'm, I'm fortunate enough, I could hire an attorney. The more, um, what I'm looking at in this future is that if we're gonna have more affordable housing in this town. And we have some really bad landlords. See, a lot of times it's that tenant, right? That's most of the problem, but. Sometimes it's a bad landlord and where does this tenant go to? Um, and, and that, that, that can't afford an attorney. Um, I think we have to really be aware of this issue um, in the future. Um, because we're gonna have more and more tenants in this town, it seems like, and um, where, where do we, how do we? Put something like that in a reg or a regulation or an enforcement policy for this town? It seems like we need Housing Authority in this town. We're having that many apartment buildings going up.
Thank, thanks, Massimo. Um, I, I think that's not really a, it's, it's a housing or landlord tenant issue. It's, it's. Less, less of a zoning issue. Um, and, and I don't know if the town has a housing code, if the issue is the condition of the premises. You can have a separate sort of housing code. There are health issues. That are violation of health code in a condition of a premises that, that could be a violation. It depends on what, what is going on. But I, I really don't put those in the zoning category. I mean, uh, other than the, you know, deed restrictions for affordable housing. That you have to make sure that the person, uh, you know, that the, the units are in fact rented persons who are qualified. At the qualified income levels, making sure that that is enforced, that, 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 that the units are. Given to the population that they're intended for and, you know, cheap. So I, I mean, that, so there's that side of, but as to just housing conditions in general. Um, I mean, those, those are real and, and I know there's issues about rent. I think towns now have to have a fair rent commission. Um, if you're over a certain amount, I think Branford has established one of those. But in terms of the condition of the thing, I think that's, you're probably right, probably defaults mainly to private stuff. I mean, you withhold your rent, you do, you know, you get in fights and, but it's, it's, it's not, I don't. I, I don't think there's a particular agency and there may be a housing code, but that's, that's kind of a different issue.
New Haven has some sort of enforcement arm uh, from the Living Cities Initiative.
Yeah, L C O, yeah, New Haven.
Right, and I don't know if, if, but that, again, that's something that we aren't right able to regulate, something that would have to be. Done through town warden's.
Yeah, my, my, if there's a housing code, there's some, could be some certifications. That, you know, year you'd get inspections and things like that, or you know, you come, that's who you complain to. You're right. I think. New Haven does the, yeah, L C O, the Living Cities Initiative, you know, whatever, that, that they, they kind of look at those things, even though I don't know how much they do. Marcy?
I know when real estate, when you're have a, you know, a. Oh, I lost Sharon. She started sharing her, her screen. Um. When you're, have an F H A mortgage, you know, there's a definite checklist that the federal government puts you through as far as. The condition of the home and lead and all of those kinds of things, which, you know, really doesn't um, extend to housing, but. I think where the connection for Massimo is, you know, because I've heard some things of late that are very concerning. You know, I've, I mean, everybody knows that, you know, I, I do a lot with real estate and I know that there's a lot of market rate housing that's not deed restricted and. Doesn't get counted towards our affordable count, which is extremely frustrating that, you know, we, we, we can't get the state to. Include, you know, our, our mobile homes or, you know, private rentals that are market rate. Because I think we would have enough affordable housing and I think we bend over backwards to bring in. New deed restricted affordable housing and there's, you know, other communities that don't need the grant monies from the state. And so they're not as worried about it, you know, and like there's that connection between if we, if we have enough affordable housing based on their percentage. The way they look at it, then we're eligible for the tax relief, forbearments or whatever, um, as a result of it, but. You know, I've heard things about, you know, organizations in New Haven, you know, uh. Supplementing um, rents for homeless in Branford and these sort of cross community kinds of things that. You know, concern me about the, not the current status of certain situations, but you know, what happens if. You know, a private organization leaves and, you know, maintaining the quality of the. Affordable housing that we do have, you know, and if it's, if it's dependent on the landlord to maintain it, you know. I, you know, that, that concerns me a little bit that, you know, there's always that give and take, you know, where you're. You know, when you're working with, say, a section eight tenant, there's requirements that the, that the um. A for fair housing, you, the landlord needs to consider the section eight tenant, but also. That the housing is sufficiently maintained and I've gone into a number of places that weren't, not so much in Branford, but. Um, that weren't, and so it's a, it's a, it's a real issue about. How that all ties together in my mind and some of it starts with what we approved for zoning and. And how that works and, and some of it I feel is being forced on us because of the way the state runs things. And, and isn't really accurate, you know, to the picture of what's on the ground and, and that's what troubles me the most. Not that we want to provide affordable housing, but that, you know, we're not being given credit for the affordable housing that we do inherently provide. Um, so, I mean. That's just my two cents on it, I guess.
That, thanks, Marcy. And I, and I don't want to, I, I just, you know, exercise my rightous here to pull us back. Uh, this is, again, we, we're, we're going to. Schedule, sort of summarize, a special meeting, a workshop type of meeting to review. The, I don't call audit slash survey, that, that, that'll be the subject matter. Uh, with McHale and, and sort of get the sort of outline of the timeframe of, of the things he was talking about. Um, and uh, and do that sometime in June and July. That, that's the consensus I see, so. I think um, Mc, McHale, does that, um, does that work or?
That, yeah, that helps me significantly. Uh, I will send out a poll for timing. And when I, it looks like I have something that looks like it might work, I'll let the commission know. Um, and if that is a good time, um, I'll go ahead and uh, schedule it as a, a meeting of the commission. Uh, with the proper notices that's required, but also not making this a, you know, we don't have to make this a televised meeting. Um, beyond, and we're not gonna be do, conducting business. It's really just a workshop to help. Um, guide what we might look to do in the future.
Great. Thank, thanks, McHale. Um, Massimo, if you want to call me, just call me sometime. You, you have a specific issue. I'll share whatever I know about. You know, landlord tenant stuff, so. Um, anything else, McHale?
That was the only item I had uh, for the planners report, so appreciate you guys indulging me. Uh, in, in having this conversation. I look forward to, to more. I want to make sure it's structured and not, you know, we're, we're using up um, planning commission uh, time. As a result, so thank you for, for having this conversation with me.
Great, thanks, McHale. Anyone else have anything? If not, then I guess we're open for a motion to adjourn if someone wants to go that route.
Chadwick makes that motion.
Motion to adjourn by Joe Chadwick, is there a second?
Marcy, a second?
Second, Marcy. Any, any further discussion? All those in favor? Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Fred Russo?
Fred Russo is in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
Massimo?
Massimo's in favor.
And Sharon's also in favor. So, thank you, everyone. And uh, see you next time. All right, good night.
Good night.